Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to address you on this important issue. The first slide we have up, you know, quite honestly, coming in for today, I really wanted to lay out something and compare us, our patrol staffing levels to other cities around us. I made some calls to Chief Tony Chapman from San Francisco, who told me he has about 1,100 officers in his patrol force, to my colleague in Austin, who has a little over 600 in his patrol. But, you know, instead of doing that, I just wanted to compare us to ourselves, really. And, you know, 1986, we had an authorized staffing level of about 1108. And, you know, 30 years later, we're at about the same, with a difference in population, as you can see, of 43 percent. So, you know, I put that slide up just so, because it shows, quite frankly, and to show the residents, really, that their officers here in this police department are second to none, and do an amazing job at what they do. However unsustainable, you know, we've, the overtime has been, as we're going to address, I mean, our officers do an amazing job, day in and day out, for this community, regardless what they're handed. Excellent. So, the next slide, we're going to go over through our staffing levels real, real quick, is our authorized sworn staffing, as we just described, is 1109. Our current staffing is 919. But after we take away people that are in training, and the recruits, you have 884 people. And then, when you subtract disability, and modified, and people on other leaves, that leaves us with 812. And that number does fluctuate. Right now, we're operating in the low 800s. And so, what that really means, just in layman's terms, is the fact that if I were to call all hands on deck today for this city, we would only be able to call back about 812 people. Next slide. This is, again, some historical perspective with regards to how our staffing has diminished through the years. And, you know, the numbers speak for themselves. Obviously, we had issues that started back, really, in 2010, but these numbers show from 2011 till present, our reduction in officers, and sergeants as well. So, our patrol staffing in the background is, we're authorized approximately 550 patrol officer positions. And, as command staff, we decided that, when we were going, as we're going through our issues, that 500 is what we felt was the minimum number that we felt would keep our officers and the community safe, meaning the minimum number of officers in beats that could obviously provide services, as well as keep each other safe. And so, currently, we're falling 87 officers short of that goal, at 413. And so, the 87 officers, really, what that represents, each officer that works patrol works a four-day work week. And so, you have to multiply that number by four to get the number of actual 10-hour shifts per week that have to be filled. And right now, our projections tell us that in September, we're going to have 348 10-hour shifts a week that will have to be filled. Again, mandatory overtime was there to try to fix this, and I'll get into that a little bit later. But by redeploying the 47 officers back to patrol, we feel, and also on the next slide, I believe I'll explain this further, we feel that we'll be able to manage that mandatory overtime a lot easier. If you look at this slide, this really just shows how the numbers of patrol, or numbers that have bidden patrol have dwindled through the, through the years, starting back in September of '12, all the way till now. As you can see, we had a high of 492 officers bidding patrol to currently, where we have 413. You know, if no change of the 10-hour shifts need to be filled, I mean, I mean, if you could look on the right-hand, so it says, and if you look, walk you through, it says "numbers of officers bidding, patrol minimum staffing, gap in patrol staffing," but then that last column's the most important column to me, and what that my command staff and I felt necessary to come before you, is the fact that, you know, if we continued at this pace for this current shift, we'd have to fill over 9,000 10-hour shifts for this shift alone. If nothing changed, we would, that would equate to over 18,000 10-hour shifts per year that would have to be filled. And so, again, we feel, if you look back up, I mean, it's still not, it's still not going to be an easy job, but, you know, we aren't trying to call back all 87 officers. We feel that we can work within the confines of our mandatory overtime to fill the 40 individuals in patrol, which still will equate to, as you can see, 4,160 10-hour shifts per six months that we would still have to fill under mandatory overtime. So, we are still trying to balance, and we didn't bring back all 87 to fill that gap in order to perform other services. This slide here is really important, because this is one of the things that, you know, as we go, and we talk about why are we doing this, and why we need to, is really, when it comes down to the human cost, and the, quite frankly, the fatigue that officers feel, and really goes down, right down to morale of the officers and their families as well, is that, as you can see from, you know, this, we'll just, I'll just deal with 2016 alone, from March to August, I had to hold officers over, and what that means is an officer that concludes their 10-hour shift, then is asked to stay into the next shift. And we had to hold officers over, as you can see, over 1,400 times, just from March to August, for over 7,500 hours. And about 1,000 of those times, I had to keep those officers here for at least six hours. You know, one thing that I will say, just this morning, I'm getting gas in my car, and there's an officer that's pumping gas, and his back's to me, and he can't see me. And this resonated to me when he says, on the phone, to, to one of his kids, that, "Have a great day in school today, because daddy doesn't know what time he's going to be home." And, you know, you hear that, and I was coming in here today, and I just have to, I cannot emphasize enough, you know, the human factor in this, and, you know, the fact that our, you know, officers that are working, you know, it used to be that, you know, during your shift, you know, you may have to miss important things in your, in your family's lives. But now, these officers have to miss things even after their shift would be over. And I think this is just an important, important issue that we have to, we have to discuss. You know, this, coupled with, it's this, these holdovers, coupled with the fact that we had the 348 shifts that were projected, you know, plus the fact, and more importantly, I can't gloss over, the fact that our mandatory overtime has limitations, that we thought we're going to be able to fill these gaps. And the reason why we're coming before you is really, was this occurred after the bid, and that we really, didn't really truly have a sense as to how this mandatory overtime would work until after the bid was done, but when these numbers came before us, we felt a need to, to bring back these officers, because as we've been in the staffing crisis, it just simply has gotten worse, and we need to do something about it. You know, this redeployment will hopefully, hopefully help fatigue that our officers are feeling. It will help morale, in that hopefully officers know that, you know, they'll be able to do something later on, after their shifts. You know, and it's going to provide, in my opinion, it's going to provide better service to our residents, you know, our better service delivery for our residents, you know, help response times, and help us respond to other issues that, quite frankly, at times right now, when we get busy, we simply can't. So, we're hopeful that, you know, this will help, and that's why we're here before you. You know, this next, next slide, that, you know, this didn't just happen overnight. And I think it's important to note all the steps that this police department has taken ever since 2010. In a few moments, I'm going to have Assistant Chief Knopf highlight some of the department memos that we have, that we've had to push out through these last years, to really continue to fill the service delivery gaps that we have, and the safety of our men and women. But, for example, we've had to reduce staffing in the bureau units, and these are in no particular order. You know, we've started, we did a flex program to augment patrol staffing. A flex program was bringing detectives out of the detective bureaus, mostly on, mostly on day shift, to work patrol for one of their days. And so, that would be, one day, they weren't working in investigations, that they would have to come out, so we tried that. Obviously, the utilization of patrol overtime in pay cars, whether it be burglary or quality-of-life cars. We do currently are starting a study that's with Matrix, that's going to help us look at our deployment as it is, and tell us exactly how we can redeploy our, our resources, both in the Bureau of Investigations, and in patrol, in the current state that we're in. We're hopeful to have that study done, hopefully by the end of the year, if not the beginning of next, so we can try to put that in place. Now, we've civilianized positions. We've obviously started, it's successful, but we started the community service program. We've reduced our command staff, reduced sergeants' positions. We've reduced services, you know, we, from unverified burglary alarms, alarms, more online reporting, and non-injury accidents. We did, at one point, consolidate to three patrol divisions, and then ultimately moved back to four for operational reasons, but we tried that. We created a contact-to-completion program that allows officers to take their investigations, i.e. like a burglary, and be able to investigate that. But obviously, that takes time, puts pressure on the officer as well, as they're in patrol, trying to investigate those crimes as well, but we do, we do that, and we still do that, and we've been, we've been successful. We've created overtime slots for the Bureau of Investigations, for detectives to follow-up on investigations on scheduled days off. We've cut our night-and-day detectives. Those are detectives that work after hours, that help triage cases that we have out in the field, and are able to package them for the detectives to get them in the morning, and sometimes even able to give advice to the officers out in the field to be able to perform their duties. We've reduced the traffic unit. We have transferred K-9 unit to patrol division. We did eliminate the violent crimes enforcement team, which we brought back, but under reduced staff. Obviously, the mandatory patrol shift holdovers that we've done, the mandatory overtime program. Full-time my report division was moved back to patrol, and it's done on an overtime basis only. We've reduced time off for our officers. It impacted promotions. And we just recently, you know, we've done the military, military in lieu to try to get more applicants from the military. And I'm going to have Assistant Chief Knopf cover some of the highlights from some of the memos that we've had to put out in recent years.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Dave Knopf, Assistant Chief of Police. So, when we started looking at this in the last few weeks, Chief asked, hey, you know, what has the department done? What have we done to address these issues over the past? I think we kind of lose ourselves in everything we're doing to different administrations and what they've done in the past, and so, I took a look at it, went back to 2010, and I found from 2000, starting in 2010, there's 26 memos between November 2010 to August of 2016, describing the measures taken or policy implemented in the department to address staffing issues. And I'll spare you all 26, I have copies if, if anybody's interested, but just to highlight some, starting in 2010, we reassigned the K-9 unit to patrol. We allowed the K-9 unit to keep their dogs, but they were assigned patrol shifts, the swing shift. Again, in December of 2010, what we did is we took information center staff, and on their overlap days in the information center, we reassigned them to work patrol specifically. In, moving on to July of 2012, we implemented a prisoner transport pilot program. And what this did was, is on, on overtime basis, we had officers assigned just to transport prisoners from a location within the city to the jail. And what that did is enabled our patrol officers to go ahead and go back into service a lot sooner, as, and they weren't, so they wouldn't be down for an extended period of time. In November of 2013, a memo was issued directing all traffic enforcement units to investigate all major injury accidents during their work hours, which was, at the time, was Monday through Friday, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. It also assigned traffic enforcement teams to the captains of the four divisions to address crime-related issues plaguing their divisions. Prior to that, patrol, patrol officers would investigate all traffic accidents, again, trying to free up officers to handle other calls for service and other priorities. In July of 2012, an operational changes memo for the department was issued due, due to a number of factors, including reduced staffing levels. This included all the bureaus, but specifically the Bureau of Investigations. One lieutenant was transferred back to patrol from the assaults juvenile and missing persons unit, and those details, the responsibility of those details were given to other investigation lieutenants, including the on-call hate crime incidents were now reported to the gang investigations lieutenant. In the Bureau of Administration, the personnel unit lieutenant was civilianized. And at that point, we began the process, many of you will remember, of contracting out of our background investigators. In the Bureau of Field Operations, the admin lieutenant was eliminated and reassigned to the substation project that was, we were trying to complete in 2012. There was a reorganization of the patrol division from four divisions to three divisions, which necessitated the reassignment of central division captain responsibilities to the other remaining three captains. In August of 2012, was the first temporary sworn deployment memo issued. At that point, that memo stated sworn staffing levels were the lowest experienced in many years, and we had 1,055 officers at that time. And due to the fact that we're not enough sworn personnel to staff the three divisions, four sergeants and 27 officers throughout the department were deployed back to patrol, to including, to include officers from the traffic enforcement unit, financial crimes unit, graffiti, FBI task force, horse-mounted unit, truancy abatement, burglary suppression unit, regional computer forensics lab, the chief's adjutant, human trafficking task force, and family violence unit. In June of 2013, another departmental operation change, changes order was issued directing, to address ongoing violence and accounting for current staffing levels in patrol. Directing gang investigation unit and assaults officers to deploy on the weekends, to work swing shift on the weekends. It also directed additional gang suppression cars, and had the traffic enforcement units adjust their schedules to work on a rotating basis. One week on, in patrol, one week off, working traffic enforcement, one weekend, back into patrol, and then back directly related to traffic enforcement. The merge unit and special operation units also adjusted their work hours to work in the field. And at that time, in August of 2013, we created the gang suppression unit, due to an uptick, an uptick in gang-related crime that summer, which evolved back into the violent crimes enforcement team. In October of 2013, another department memo was issued, implementing the flex car staffing plan, which Chief Garcia already outlined to you, having officers from other bureaus come back one of their workdays and work in patrol. In July of 2014, summer staffing program was, was issued, and this was to address reduced staffing. And what that memo basically directed, it stated that we would continue with the department flex car program, backfill pay cars due to increased vacancies. We would maintain mandatory staffing levels for each of the patrol shifts, and this was done first by either voluntary, by volunteer, by volunteers to hold over, and if we didn't get enough volunteers, that they would be mandated to hold over. And then, adjusting special operations units to supplement patrol. And at that time, lastly, the training for officers in the department was limited to mandatory training only, only that, that training that's mandated by post, that we need to train our officers on. And lastly, just as a snapshot, in January of 2015, the second redeployment of patrol resources was issued. And in that memo, four, four sergeants and 23 officers were sent back to patrol from the metro unit, and the other bureaus were affected by one lieutenant, four sergeants, and 13 officers who were sent back to patrol. Thank you.
Counsel, we just felt that took some time, but, and there's more. But I, we felt that it's important to impress upon the council and this community that this police department did not throw his hands in the air, and absolutely has been trying to patch these gaps. And so, it was important for us to make sure that the council, as well as our community, knows that this department has been trying.
Jennifer Shembry, Director of Employee Relations. I'm going to talk a little bit about the meet and confer process quickly. So, as the chief mentioned, we have already done the shift bid for the September-through-March shift change, and so, the redeployment of the 47 officers would require us to do a shift rebid. And the bid preference will be affected for a significant number of police officers, and that is a significant issue. For example, you may have a police officer who bid and got on day shift, and he or she may have already worked out daycare situations, school situations, those sorts of things. And this would upend that, and potentially, that same officer could end up on a swing or a mid-shift. So, we do want to emphasize the importance of, significance of doing a shift rebid. The redeployment is going to be spread out across the department to lessen impact on the employees and services to the public. This is an urgent issue. That shift rebid needs to occur immediately. The shift change is scheduled to occur on September 11th, so that is the effective date of the next shift change. And because of the short timeframe we have, there is not enough time to meet and confer. Making an emergency determination under the MMBA, which I'll explain a little bit further in a couple more slides, would allow bypass of the meet and confer process for the shift rebid, but the city would still be required to meet and confer after, at the earliest practical time. Little bit of background on the meet and confer process, we thought would be helpful. The meet and confer process is governed by the Myers-Millies-Brown Act, which is in the government code, and the city charter, as well as our local rules, which we refer to as our employer-employee relations resolution 39367. The meet and confer process happens through the authorized representatives. In the city's case, the authorized representatives are the city's negotiators, who's delegated that authority by the city manager, and our direction and authority comes from the mayor and city council, who's elected by the residents of San Jose. On the other side of the table for labor, there's the labor negotiators, and their direction and authority comes from their union membership. On the city side, the mayor and the city council provide us direction as a single body. There's been a lot of questions about Measure V, so we thought we'd briefly go over what Measure V is. Per the city charter, any disputes involving things that are subject to meet and confer with our police officers association, as well as our firefighters' union, can go to binding interest arbitration to settle that dispute. In 2010, the voters passed Measure V, which amended Charter Section 1111 to prohibit an arbitrator from making a decision or award that deprives or interferes with the discretion of the police or fire chief in making managerial, operational, or staffing decisions. We wanted to clarify here, though, that Measure V does not excuse compliance with the Myers-Millies-Brown Act. We still have to meet and confer, and meet and confer in good faith to impasse, and then in the end, if it falls under the provision of Measure V, the city council can choose to implement in open session, and if it does not, then we would go to binding interest arbitration. But we still have to comply with the Myers-Millies-Brown Act and negotiate over that issue. We wanted to note the, that we have achieved some very significant items through labor negotiations with the POA. I think almost all of these were with voluntary agreement with the POA, and they're very, very significant issues. In 2011, we did achieve a 10% total compensation reduction with the POA, that was, what was agreed to by the POA. We civilianized up to 20 positions. In 2012, we outsourced background investigators. In 2013, also through agreement, we implemented the Tier Two pension benefits for new employees, made changes to sick leave payout, and probably the most significant item that we've been working on in the last year and a half or so is the alternative pension reform framework that was directed by the city council. And we've also made changes to increasing bilingual pay. We got body worn cameras across the goal line, mandatory overtime staffing program, and some changes regarding community policing. And then in 2016, we've made some changes to the police sergeant's transfer policy, and also, as the chief mentioned, changed the minimum qualifications for a police officer to include military in lieu. And through all of this, we also have contracts with all 11 of our bargaining units, most are multi-year contracts. Under the MMBA, back to the patrol staffing emergency situation, under the MMBA, which again is the government code that oversees labor negotiations, we can, in cases of an emergency, where the governing body has determined an emergency, we can bypass the meet and confer process. Doesn't mean it's completely waived, we would just meet and confer after the emergency is declared, determined. And so, this is the government code section that authorizes that. And so, the next steps, so the city council can make an emergency determination under the MMBA. It's specific to this very issue, this patrol staffing issue, the redeployment of the 47 officers, and the shift rebid, and it bypasses the meet and confer process to allow for that, and then the city will meet and confer with the POA after implementation. And so, that is our recommendation, is to make an emergency determination under the MMBA. If approved by the city council, there will be an immediate redeployment of the 47 police officers to patrol. We would conduct a shift rebid in advance of the September 11th shift change, and then we would meet and confer with a POA. And we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I know we have several members of the public who'd like to speak, so I'm going to go to the public comment, and then we'll come back to the council for questions and comments. We started on a slide describing the staffing in 1986, which is apparently about where we're at. The mayor from 1986 is here, Mayor Tom McHenry, has come to speak. Anand Rashid, Rose LeBeau, and Bob Siffle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for identifying me correctly. I appreciate that. Members of the council and chiefs, you know, I found that presentation, probably as you all did, very painful, to look at where we were as a council, as a city, and where we are now. I live at 110 Rankin Avenue, and I was interested, looking at the definitions of emergency, as they were in the paper, and I've seen some of you discuss them. And, you know, people in the community, obviously, are discussing this. You know, emergency, I think in most people's definition, is something unexpected, often dangerous, something that requires quick action, which I know you all are attempting to do. I live in a neighborhood in central San Jose, some of you know where it is. There's about 20 homes on that neighborhood, two have had their cars stolen from in front of their houses in the last three months. There was a murder there about three weeks ago, right by the park, where a lot of my family go to. I know this is reflected in most of, most of the neighborhoods that you know. The good, safe city that we are, that's well-known, but we live in very trying, dangerous times. All we have to do is look at the news or the afternoon paper, and when you get home and take a look at exactly what's happening here and in the world. So, I think that, that definition of emergency is very important. I also think the definition of emergency is important in a different way. Whenever I come to City Hall, I always park outside and walk across the plaza, because referring back to the 1980s, you know, right out in front of here, two police officers named Jean Simpson and Gordon Silva were reacting to an emergency, and they rushed to it, and both of them died that day. You know, it's a very, very tough situation, something that everybody who wears the uniform of San Jose police officers understand well. It's something that demands emergency action. It's something that demands immediate action. You know, one, another reason I came here today is that when you see quarterbacks talk about police training and what we ought to do, it makes me concerned. When you see out-of-town billionaires wanting to interfere with you and the citizens of San Jose determining what we're going to do with my, with our police department, that makes us, and should make us all very concerned, and should make us very angry also, it certainly does me. So, I ask you to please look kindly, as you all have, and with the kind of urgency that you have, into what this emergency is. Work as you have been yourselves with the mayor, with the chief, with the members of the POA, and let's rebuild the San Jose Police Department as something reflective of what we all want, and something that can do a job for the citizens of San Jose.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Rose?
Rose Amador-Labeau.
I'm sorry, Rose, I mispronounced. I got Amador.
Thank you. It's okay. I encourage the city council to declare a public safety emergency, so that the police chief, Eddie Garcia, can sidestep the police union contract and immediately assign the dwindling number of officers where they're most needed. It's the most expedient solution to a deepening crisis. Please support his recommendation for the safety of our city and the safety of our officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anand Rashid. After Anand is Bob, followed by Paul Kelly, James Gonzalez, and Scott Largent.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city manager, city councilman. My name is Anand Rashid. I'm a member of the CAB. I moved in here in San, to San Jose in 1980 and I lived in Evergreen area and it was really the safest place I ever been in the United States. My kids, they used to go even to Montgomery School. They used to walk about four or five blocks even for kindergarten, we're talking about, and Montgomery School. And I was even the president of BTA for Montgomery School for three years. We felt really safe. Now, honestly, when we call up for an officer or for any reason even not for emergency even, it takes a while until officer comes because we don't have enough officers. The thing about it is I know the budget, the money, but is it really more important to fix the bots on the streets or for your safety and our safety and our kids' safety? And this is here really very, very important. 15 years ago, we were the safest city in the United States. Right now, we are, we have in about 37, 38 facilities so far and it's still going. Now we have to blow over officers, blow away officers from the gang task force or from the detectives and bring them on, on the streets. This is not really the way we really like to be. We like to sleep, we're safe, I mean, we like to feel safe when we sleep and I don't want to be redundant, like the mayor, what he said. It is really getting really very short and I, I just don't want to be redundant and I, I hope you consider and you do something. Instead of this here, the city, we're talking about the academy, we spend $124,000 for each officer and it just really going somewhere else and they have the right to go somewhere else.
Thank you.
You can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bob?
Hi, yeah, my name is Bob Sipple. I've been a neighborhood leader for over 30 years, didn't need these glasses nor a cheat sheet. I've stood in front of you even in the old building. I remember just a few years ago, we were the safest city in the entire United States and for five years in a row, we were that. And when we did that, we weren't at 1,108 officers. We were at 1,108 officers, but the national average for this type of city with that population should have been done at 2,500 officers. So I'm saying our police officers did a great job. We're now in a point where you're here to decide whether it's an emergency and thanks to Tom McHenry, he answered some of it. An emergency can be a personal thing and there's connotations to go with it. I can't imagine if you're a city and you're declaring a state of emergency, you might have an inward feeling, oh my gosh, we haven't done what we're supposed to do to lead the community or PD says, we're not doing all we can. And being also a member of CAB and watching this community for so many years, I can say in this case, no, you all worked together with PD and found a solution that will be voted on in November and these guys and gals have done this with 413 people on the street. It's, it's amazing. It's amazing we haven't had more problems than that. But today, we're having an emergency by many, many terms and including my own. I normally, as a neighborhood leader, say, can you fix the sidewalk? Can you help me get this? Can you get some more trees, whatever? In the last two years, I've heard nothing but can we stop the burglaries? I came home the other day and somebody broke in and the guy or gal was still in my house and when I called PD, they couldn't come out. And it was enough for me to respond to all that, but on a personal level this year, excuse I had it happen to me. I had a neighbor threatening me for nine years, called PD five times. I've got relatives on this force. They wanted to come, they couldn't get here. It is an emergency.
Good afternoon. I'm Paul Kelly, President of the San Jose Police Officers Association. I'm here to support the declaration of a public safety emergency and urge the mayor and city council to support our chief of police and empower him to do what he believes is necessary to keep police officers and our residents as safe as possible and as soon as possible. There's been some speculation swirling around this issue. I want to set the record straight. Some of the council have said, why won't the POA work with the city on some of the items the city has identified that may help recruit and retain officers? One of those items, the PSRP, or as many know it as the DROP Program, a program designed to keep officers that have retired on the force a few more years as we struggle to fill our dwindling ranks. The POA supports this program and we have been working on it. But your own city staff will tell you that even if we sign on the dotted line today and agreed to implement the program, the earliest it could be done and implemented is next year. We have, and we have an emergency now that needs a solution now. Another item is a referral program where current San Jose police officers would be incentivized with time off or money to help recruit officers to come here and serve. I took an oath to tell the truth and there is no way that I would be telling the truth to the people if I said, hey, come on over, everything is fine. It would be unethical. What the city would be asking us to do is to act like a dishonest used car salesman and tell folks, sure, the engine doesn't run, but come on, we'll fix it later. The windows don't roll down, but we don't need fresh air. I cannot and will not do that. We have to focus on passing Measure F and the business tax that will put us on the path to ethically and honestly say to prospective recruits that it is right for them to come over to San Jose Police Department. We are losing officers faster than we can replace them. To those council members who are delusional enough to say we are not in an emergency staffing crisis, now I ask you, what number of officers does our department have to reach before it is an emergency in your eyes? I'll be here for any questions.
Thank you, sir. James Gonzalez. James is followed by, I believe it's Scott Largent, Mark Trout and Sean Cartwright.
Hello, James Gonzalez, Vice President of the San Jose POA. This is a very serious issue that we're dealing with today and it really should not be taken lightly. And I ask you, what credible alternative do we have to keep our police officers safe and provide the services that our residents deserve? I'm really sorry and disappointed that this issue has been clouded today by some of the rhetoric that really misrepresents what has been a total partnership between the POA, this elected body, our city manager, our police chief, everybody, to get many, many things over the line. We are working as best as we can to rebuild this police department. We've done partnerships on community outreach, coffee with a cop, we've gotten body cameras, major changes to our use of force policies, chokehold policies. We're moving the ball as fast as it's ever been moved forward and that's not reflective of the rhetoric that's happened this last week. Councilmember Oliverio's proposal to have the sheriff swoop in and save the day is not a serious proposal. All of you received a letter from the sheriff outlining what a nonsensical idea that is. And I'll actually quote her because that's her quote. The sheriff said, "I will certainly entertain any mutual aid requests and provide whatever resources necessary to meet our mutual aid requirements, but providing 340 10-hour shifts a week is a nonsensical idea unworthy of any further attention," unquote, Mr. Oliverio. As far as the other bright idea of having CHP swoop in and save the day, apparently Mr. Oliverio doesn't understand the way that mutual aid works. He fantasizes about redeploying our traffic officers, all six of them, all six traffic officers that we have left after that has been decimated. That's not the way the mutual aid works and the CHP being understaffed is not offering that assistance. Look, at the end of the day, these are serious issues that serious people need to have a serious discussion about. This declaration of emergency must be made to keep our officers and our residents safe. I think it's time for Mr. Oliverio to take a seat at the little kids' table at Thanksgiving dinner and let the adults deal with this crisis.
Thank you, sir. Scott Largent. Okay, Mark Trout. After Mark Trout is Sean Cartwright, followed by Victorious Alexander and Carmen Hernandez.